Board five councillor LeVar Click Bruce.
Doing great things in the city of Springfield. He's a young entrepreneur and an African American here. And he brought back a pro basketball team called 413 Elite. And whereas the city council is proud to honor Charles Evans of Springfield, Mass. And whereas Charles is alumni of Springfield Science and Technology High School. And whereas Charles is a college graduate from Everett Waters College, University of Central Florida. And Charles, if I actually just come to the podium, please, excuse me. I apologize. And then he has his mascot with him as well. And whereas Charles has 14 years professionally playing basketball experience. And is also a 10 year veteran of playing professionally basketball overseas in Italy, Switzerland, and Tahiti. Charles is part of the Sigma Beta Delta International Business Honor Society. And that's in itself is amazing because you're an athlete first, excuse me, a student first, and then athlete second. Charles is the owner of the seat and CEO of Springfield 413 Elite American Basketball Association, which is ABA, professional basketball team and 413 Elite Founder Corporation, which is a nonprofit. And whereas holding the records on a few stages in high school, college and professional levels with this newest achievement of being the first African American to own a professional basketball team in the birthplace of basketball, Springfield, Mass. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Springfield City Council hereby recognizes, honors, commends Charles Evans for his passion for the sport of basketball and love for the community, creating space and opportunities for others to enjoy basketball and making a difference in the lives of many of the in the city of Springfield. We wish you continued success in your future endeavors. And this is sponsored by myself, Justin Hurst, Tracy Whitfield, and councillor Jesse Liederman and all councillors. So Charles, we thank you for your investment in the city of Springfield. Not only have you done amazing work on your own, but you thought it not robbery to come back and give back to your hometown, which is here in the city of Springfield. And we thank you because you didn't have to do it. And I know you also sponsor a lot of local events and give a lot of mentorship to our young people. And we're truly grateful for you. And anything we can do for you on the city council, we're here to support you. God bless you and thank you.
Councillor Click Bruce, what I think we'll do is if any other councillors would like to share their thoughts, and then we'll hear from Mr Evans, bring him back for a photo, and then we'll move to the next, does that make sense? Are there any other councillors who wish to be heard on the proclamation? Councillor Hurst?
Thank you, Mr President. Thank you, LeVar, for these efforts. Thank you, Charles, for everything that you're doing for the city of Springfield. I appreciate it, especially because I was a former educator at the high school of science and technology. And what I'm always telling our young people is you can't take your talents to South Beach. You stand on the shoulders of individuals who have invested in making Springfield a better place, and you ought to have an obligation to come back to the city of Springfield that allowed you and paved the way for you to be successful to make it better for the next person after you. So I appreciate the fact that you're coming back to the city of Springfield, the fact that you've dreamed big, and the fact that you've actually put in the effort and the dedication and had the foresight to do something that not a lot of other people can do. So I appreciate it coming from the birthplace of basketball. I appreciate the fact that you're being a role model and serving as a role model for so many others and so many of our young people who need to understand that the sky's the limit, and when you come from the city of Springfield, you can accomplish anything. So thank you so much for everything that you're doing and keep up the great work.
Thank you councillor Hurst. Councillor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr President. Thank you, LeVar, for this proclamation. And thank you, Charles, for coming down here with your friend and adding some levity to the city council. But for your efforts to remind people that Springfield is indeed the birthplace of basketball and that all these efforts should make people realize how lucky they are to be in the city and to have citizens like you who are proud of the city, and we are proud of you. And I'd like to be added to the resolve. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Walsh. I know we're also joined virtually by councillor Govan. Councillor Govan, did you wish to offer any statements? We'll take that as a no.
No.
Yes, sir.
Maybe we will now go to councillor Govan.
Go to councillor Govan.
I'm sorry. Thank you so much. I had to find the mute button. I just want to say thank you to Mr Evans and his accomplishments. And just as the rest of the councillors said, I think that, you know, the work that he's done, especially in support of our youth, I think is commendable. And I'm going to continue to pray that he continues to have success and continues to touch the lives of our youths in the city. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Govan. And Mr Evans, allow me to say finally on behalf of the entire city council and the city of Springfield, thank you. We have a long way to go in Springfield to truly recognizing our potential as basketball city, USA. But your efforts are bringing us closer to claiming that true identity that we know rests here in the city of Springfield. One of the initiatives that I began at the beginning of this year as city council president was a working group on tourism and the creative economy, in part to look at how we can better harness those identities in the city of Springfield. And I'm hopeful we can engage you in that effort as we move forward. At this time, Mr Evans, we recognize you to make any statements that you wish to.
Everybody on behalf of 413 Elite, thank you, LeVar. Thank you, brother Hurst. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. I truly appreciate it, man. It's been a blessing. It's been an honor, to be honest with you, to, like you said, carry those giants. I grew up playing in every single local league around town, and it made me who I was. So like you said, it's not a want, it's an obligation. So we have to come back. We have to bring it back and let the world know. Birthplace started in Springfield, Massachusetts. We are the birthplace. So this is where the game belongs and where it needs to be flourished and nurtured and carried beyond even where I'm taking it. So just thank you, guys, again. I truly appreciate every single one of you, and I'm honored.
Mr Evans, at this time, we'll invite you behind the bar with the mascot to take a photo with the city council.
Mr Bucket?
Thank you. My pleasure. All right. Continuing the celebration this evening, our next round of proclamations will be offered by councillor Hurst.
See, everybody is hearing the audience as a result of this particular proclamation. Whereas the city of Springfield is pleased to recognize Springfield Youth Cheerleading S Y C. And whereas S Y C is a nonprofit organization committed to providing a competitive cheer program to the youth. And whereas S Y C proudly represents a diverse group of Springfield natives ranging from ages four to 17 years old. And whereas under the direction of Myrna Davis, Sevea Latende, Diana Morales, and staff, S Y C community is able to build a strong team committed to supporting each other through engagement, team fundraising efforts, and countless hours of training. And if you hear your name, if you could please stand, coaches included. Whereas the 2023 S Y C team roster includes, and I apologize if I butcher your name, Akira Savage, Alexia Pereira, Anali Rivera, Anazali Clemente, Brandy Collins, Cassidy Fuentes, Delaney McDonald, Destiny Mills, Farrah Grant, Jade Green, Kayla Bowie, Kelsey Charles, Mahogany Lawrence, Selena Harrison, Willow Snowden Hudson, Yanalee Richards, Zareya Boyce, Ziva Ray Joyner, Zayana Crune, Alanis, You got me. Licorice, Kelis Saceris, Jasleen Saceris, Harper Jermaine, Aubrey Rizado, Delani Andrews, Corey Simmons, Zalea Francisco. And if I missed anybody, could you please stand at this time? And I apologize. And whereas through their tenacious drive to represent Springfield and win, S Y C qualified for a new competitive level for the 2023 to 2024 season. The team did this all on their own, winning big locally, regionally, and nationally. And whereas S Y C 2023 awards and accomplishments include the sportsmanship award 2023 American National Championship in Springfield, Mass. First place American National Championship in Springfield, Mass. Second place Quest National Recreational Cheerleading Championship in Orlando, Florida. First place Jam Fest in Durham, New Hampshire. And first place U S All Stars Queen of the Nile in Western Mass. And finally, first place U S Finals in Western Mass. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Springfield City Council hereby recognizes, honors, and commends Springfield Youth Cheerleading for all of their accomplishments and their continued dedication to our youth. We wish them continued success in their future seasons. A proclamation sponsored on May 22, 2023, in honor of Springfield Youth Cheerleading, attested to by our clerk Gladys Soyola Lopez, and sponsored by city councillor Justin Hurst, LeVar Click Bruce, Tracy Whitfield, and all councillors. So I'll be brief. You know, the fact that oftentimes when we come into this chambers, you know, we're normally celebrating a lot of our young men. But the fact that our young ladies are doing big things and clearly making us proud on a national scale says a lot, not just about yourselves and the work and dedication that you have been putting into it, but also about your coaches and how dedicated they are to making sure that you all are successful. And I know having a young 11 year old who plays for S Y F, that it's not easy. It costs. It takes a lot of patience. It also takes a lot of parents who are committed and dedicated to seeing that their young people are successful. So if we could just give it up for our parents who are in the room or audience. We appreciate the work that you do, and we appreciate the involvement and the involvement that you are having on our young women here in the city of Springfield. So with that said, congratulations. Continue to make us proud, continue to do great things, and we appreciate you and celebrate you today.
Thank you councillor Hurst. Before we hear from the rest of the city council, we have a special guest in the chamber this evening representing the office of State Senator Adam Gomez, our former colleague here from Ward One, always a city councillor in our hearts, is Zulmali Delgado Rivera.
Hi, you guys. So I'm Commissioner Rivera Delgado from the Women's Commission, who we have Kateri Walsh here, who's part of the Springfield Women's Commission. And so we try to represent women's issues and really highlight and just be able to push forward what we feel women's issues are. And today, right, we want to make sure that we represent you and want you to hold your head high because during a time where women's sports are just now getting recognized, cheerleading is one of the sports that is least recognized. And you guys are not just cheering for everyone else, but you're cheering for yourselves, and you're pushing barriers and getting it recognized here in the city of Springfield. So we want to thank you, and we want to extend this and thank our parents, because without you, our girls would not be able to get to the places that they are. Your love and dedication means a lot to them, and they're showing it for you here today. And so I just want to congratulate you all, especially the coaches. And so on behalf of our friend, the Senator Adam Gomez, they sent out a citation for the whole organization that says, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to the Springfield Youth Cheerleading in recognition of their state and national accomplishments and awards." And so with that said, I want to present this to our coaches, and I'll walk over there so they can finish off.
Thank you Commissioner Delgado Rivera. Do any further councillors wish to be heard? Councillor Walsh?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr President, and thank you to my fellow commissioner. But as the Chair of the Springfield Women's Commission, I'm delighted that you are down here. I'm delighted that you're being recognized, and I bet you're a lot better than the boys, right? That's what I think. But we are so proud of you and your accomplishments in Springfield and nationally. And is it possible, can we get a cheer? Is there any way we can, we can see any of the action? What do you think, Mr President?
I want some smoke, yeah.
If, can we hear one or can we see one?
We will suspend the rules of decorum for cheering. We'll hear one cheer, but I don't want any of the councillors getting any ideas for later on in the meeting.
Mr President, that was awesome. Outstanding. Continue your good work.
Thank you councillor Walsh. Councillor Click Bruce. Councillor Click Bruce.
Listen, I want, I actually want to play in the game right now. I'm ready to go. I'm ready, I'm ready to suit up. Hey, Charles, I need a jersey. Nah, but seriously, to my friend Myrna Davis and Sarah Williams, actually, I know Sarah started the program, if I'm not mistaken. And I had a small piece to play with part of it, because a part of the YMCA in Dunbar was a home for a little while. So it's good to see the program flourishing. And basically, I see Myrna everywhere. She's always involved. And Myrna, I just want to, I just want to recognize you for your hard work, because we truly thank you. And she's always advocating for, for everybody. And she's, she's always on the front line. So I just wanted to say that small piece. And then, who runs the world? Who runs the world? All right, keep it going. We love you. And also, I'm a coach, and I want you guys to know, you young ladies to know, you play a big part of what goes on in any outcome of a basketball game, football game, whatever it is. You are part of that because it changes momentum. So I want to make sure I let you ladies know that. And you are appreciated. You all look beautiful. Continue to be the best you can be. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Click Bruce. Councillor Allen?
Mr President, I just want to thank all of you for that awesome cheer, bringing that to this council chamber. If you're, if you're around in about an hour and a half, we could use that. This meeting goes longer and is more frustrating than we want it to be. So thank you, thank you for doing that. If you want to come back, be my guest. But it's awesome that you do so much for each, for other people, cheering for other people to be successful. And it's great that you're willing to do that for others. And that's the key to success in life, I think, is, is being good to other people, supporting other people, and things will work out for you as well. So thank you very much for everything.
Thank you councillor Allen. Councillor Govan?
Thank you, Mr President. And girls do run the world. So thank you, ladies, for stepping up and helping to run the world. I just want to congratulate you all and hope that you will continue to succeed and represent our city well. You have done an amazing job. And I want to thank the councillors who did the proclamation, councillor Hurst, you know, because this is very important. We need to honor our youth, young people, and continue to celebrate them. So thank you so much.
Thank you councillor Govan. At this time, we'll invite the coaches forward if they'd like to speak on behalf of the team. And as they come, allow me to say, it's always a great honor for us to welcome young people to the city council chamber. It's a special honor for me, as when I was elected in 2017, I became one of the youngest people elected in the history of Springfield. I beat councillor Fenton by a couple of months. And I have a suspicion perhaps the next record holder is sitting in the audience. What I always tell young people when they come for a proclamation is I like to explain a little bit about what a proclamation really is. It's many things, but in part, it's a record of the history of our city. When it's attested to by the city clerk, it's entered into our records. And so your story becomes a part of our history in Springfield. And I think for our young people who sit before us as our future, we want you to know that that story is valued and that you're continuing to write that next chapter together. And so as you go forward in your careers, whether it's in your sport, in your academic career, in your professional career, remember those lessons that you're learning as you work together as a team. You can apply those in every aspect of your life, and you never know where it'll lead you. So make a plan, but don't be afraid to change that plan as you go along. At this time, we'll recognize the coaches. We would love to hear from you.
I'll be brief. Just a little history. As LeVar said earlier, the program did start with Sarah and Rich Williams. We started out as CYO Panthers, right? Then we changed a little bit. We got some Tigers. Costumes changed. Girls grew up. Coaches changed, but we still, our purpose was just to keep these girls busy. We have girls that have been with us. Where are you, Destiny and Cookie? Please stand up. And Nugget? Since the age of five, these girls are now entering high school. And the purpose of our program is to just lay the foundation. If I can make the dent for these three girls, we can continue to make it for any other girls that come into our program and leave our program. And that's the purpose of our program. If we can keep them busy, they know that when I enter the room, it's not good. So I'm bad cop, but we do it from our heart. So we encourage them to continue to be humble, making sure that S Y C is always a home and that once the costume is on, that's who they represent. They don't represent themselves as an individual, but as a program. Same thing as our parents. Our parents are just as strong as the girls, and they've been entrusting us for many, many years. My own children are a product of the program, now graduates and also coaching. Janice started at the age of four, now almost college graduate. So the program works. And again, if it works and we can make one little change, then my day and my job is done.
All right. So, oh, absolutely.
Say cheese.
You done?
I just want to say thank you so much for having us here today. I want to thank the parents and then my fellow coaches. It's been beautiful to see how the program has grown over the past couple of years. And I just want to say to all of our girls that I am so proud of you, especially our veterans. You girls are amazing. You're going to do great things, and I'm very happy to be your coach.
I just want to say thank you for tonight. You girls know that I love you, and I'm going to keep on pressing on, and we have an even more exciting season for next year. I'm in my 10th year of coaching at S Y C. It's in my DNA, making these girls as competitive as they possibly can be on a regional and now national level. That's something that we're very proud of as an organization, but also we want to represent our city in the best possible light. And, you know, we're only getting better. Thank you.
So at this time, we'd like to invite the team and the coaches behind the bar to take a photo with the city council. So we'll ask that you all step forward. And councillor Hurst, do you have the proclamations if you want to hand those out as they come?
Cassidy, Alexia. Oh, I forgot. Akira's been here for 10 years. Sorry, Don.
Congratulations to all our proclamation awardees. We're going to take a brief recess to clear the chamber before convening for our hearings meeting.
Hello, how are you?
Council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Walsh.
Present.
Present, Counselor Fenton. Away, Counselor Perez. Absent, Counselor Whitfield. Absent, Counselor Govan. Present, Counselor Allen.
Present.
Present, Counselor Brown. Present, Counselor Hurst.
Present.
Present, Counselor Click Bruce.
Present.
Present, Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Present, Counselor Curran. Away, Counselor Davila.
Present.
Present, Counselor Letterman. Present.
Will council and guests please rise and join us in a moment of silence? Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can be seated. As we proceed forward, let the record reflect that Counselor Govan and Counselor Brown are participating in the proceedings remotely. For council's information, Attorney Ken Shea is also with us remotely to provide any legal counsel as necessary. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item?
The first item is a petition for Comcast on Page Boulevard.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Yes, Hector Valles, Engineering Department.
Mr. Valles, the floor is yours.
Well, Comcast's petition to install around 354 feet of 4 inches conduit from a box of Comcast on the sidewalk on Page Boulevard to Shaw Lane to provide service to business on 179 Page Boulevard.
Are there any questions on the petition? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the roll to approve the petition.
On approving the petition, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton. Away, Counselor Perez. Absent, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran. Away, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes. The votes are sufficient. Petition is accepted. Madam Clerk, please call item two.
Item two is petition for Comcast on Hendy Street.
Mr. Valles?
Yes. Yes, Comcast is going to install 4-inch conduit around 300 feet from a pole on Page Boulevard to AD Street. It's going to provide service to the business on 271 Page Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Valles. Are there any questions on the petition? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the roll to approve the petition.
On approving the petition, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton. Away, Counselor Perez. Absent, Counselor Whitfield. Absent. Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran. Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes. The votes are sufficient. The petition is approved. Madam Clerk, please recognize the counselor in seat number two.
Counselor Fenton?
Present.
Madam Clerk, please call item three.
Item three is a petition for Eversource on Walnut Street.
Mr. Valles?
Yeah, Eversource is looking to improve the system in that area on Walnut Street between Lebanon Street and Ashley Street. They're going to install a new manhole, and they're going to connect around 555 feet of 5 inches conduit to improve the system in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Valles. Is there any questions on the petition? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the petition.
On approving the petition, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez. Absent. Counselor Whitfield. Absent. Counselor Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes. The votes are sufficient. The petition is accepted. Madam Clerk, was Counselor Curran recognized during the attendance?
He was not.
Can you please recognize Counselor Curran?
Counselor Curran?
Present.
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please call item four.
Item four is a petition for Eversource Gas on Dwight Street.
Mr. Valles?
Yeah, Eversource Gas is replacing the gas hydrant around Springfield. They're replacing it with BVC plastic pipes. This time, it's going to be around downtown, in Dwight Street, Bridge Street, Bruce Londonway, Market Street, and Harrison Avenue, and they're going to improve the pressure from low to medium pressure.
Thank you, Mr. Valles. Are there any questions on the petition? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the roll to approve the petition.
On approving the petition, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez. Absent. Counselor Whitfield. Absent. Counselor Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes. The votes are sufficient. The petition is approved. Madam Clerk, please call item five.
Item five is for a special permit for motor vehicle sales at the property known as 797 Berkshire Avenue.
Is the petitioner present?
Yes.
Please step forward. This is a special permit hearing. It will be run in accordance with the rules of the City Council. Proponents for the special permit will be allowed 20 minutes to present their testimony in favor. Opponents will also have 20 minutes. Each side will be entitled to five minutes of rebuttal. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and recognize the petitioner as the first proponent. Please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Martone, 797 Berkshire Ave.
The floor is yours.
Just a little background on myself. I own Springfield Auto and Truck. We're located on Bay Street for 23 years. We moved through Berkshire Ave in October of last year. On Bay Street, we had a used car license, which was a pivotal part of our business. During the course of some of the business transactions, we need a used car license to transfer a title. Some of these vehicles come into our possession for trades towards equipment and services and goods for our day-to-day business transactions. So, when you take in a vehicle on trade, you need a used car license to transfer the title and the documents and dispose of it, or sell it, or whatever you're going to move the vehicle, wherever you're going to do with it. So, we're looking to apply for a license here on Berkshire Ave. Our license is not transferable from Bay Street. According to City of Springfield, you need to apply for a new license. So, we are here tonight. In the process for the license, we've met with the Indian Orchard Citizens Council. We had an onsite visit at our property with the neighbors and the abutters, an open forum where they could talk and ask questions. We answered all the questions that anyone seemed to have. And we then filed our petition with the planning board. Planning reviewed it, and they came up with a plan for us to move forward with it. We did get a letter of support from the Indian Orchard Citizens Council to move forward with our project. We have the sufficient space to perform this job, and we also have the sufficient space to display the vehicles properly on paved marking, to display the vehicles required by the planning board. Everything that is displayed for sale needs to be displayed on pavement, and we have pavement to do that job. And we are here tonight to apply for that.
Thank you, Mr. Martone. Do you have anything further that you wish to offer?
Not at this time.
At this time, we would ask that you step aside. Are there any other individuals present virtually or in person who wish to testify in favor of the special permit? Seeing none, do you wish to testify in favor?
Favor.
In favor, please step forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Corio Nataloni. I own a business on 1045 Boston Road. Kitchen's by Corio, and he's one of my suppliers, to be honest with you. Have long-standing relationship, and is A1 stand-up guy. So, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any further individuals present in person or virtually who wish to testify in favor of the special permit? Seeing none, before we proceed to any opponents who may be present, I did see it looked like Counselor Whitfield may have attempted to log on. I do not see her name now, and so, I did message her to see if she is logging on, but at this time, she is not present. Counselor Govan, before we move to the opponents, you have your hand up.
Should I chime in here, or should I wait until after the testimonies? I mean, the opponents.
Counselor Govan, so at this time, we're currently still receiving testimony. We're going to hear from the opponents, followed by any rebuttal, at which time, we would then enter questions from the City Council while the hearing remains open. Once we close the hearing, we would then enter deliberation by the City Council.
Okay, thank you. I'll wait for after. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. At this time, is there anybody present in person or virtually who wishes to testify in opposition to the special permit? I'll say again, is there anybody present virtually or in person who wishes to testify in opposition to the special permit? Seeing no individuals present to testify in opposition, are there any questions from the City Council for the petitioner while the hearing remains open? Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, Mr. Martone, is this, it sounds like, if I got it right, that the activity, the permit you're applying for, you already have one at your other address? You're just, so it's not a new business activity? It's the same business activity, just going to be?
New location. Yeah. You can't take it with you to the new location. You have to apply for one at the new location.
I understand that.
And we've had that license for 23 years. There were no violations, no code violations, no problems for 23 years. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Are there any further questions for the petitioner while the hearing remains open? Seeing none, without objection, I'll now declare that the public hearing is closed. Is there any deliberation amongst the council? Counselor Govan?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I guess my comments was that I just wanted to confirm what Mr. Martone said. We did have a site visit. The Indian Orchard Citizens Council had a site visit at the property, and a few neighbors, a couple of neighbors came out, and they were informed of what was going on, and they didn't have any concerns at this time. And we voted at the Indian Orchard Citizens Council to support the request for the petition, and Mr. Martone did receive a letter from the Indian Orchard Citizens Council in favor of the petition.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. Is there any further deliberation amongst the council relative to the special permit before our vote? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on approval of the special permit. Two-thirds majority vote is required.
On approving the special permit, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. President, just a quick point of order before we take the vote.
Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, this might be just a clerical error, but I don't know if it makes any difference. I see here on page 44 of the agenda of the paper we're given, the address is listed as 979 Berkshire Avenue. On the side-plan review, maybe Phil can chime in? I don't know if it makes any difference. Yeah, Phil, if you see on the side-plan review of your memo, it says the petition has requested?
Oh, yeah. That's just an error on my part. It's 797.
But that wouldn't change the vote in any way, shape, or form. Is that correct, Mr. President?
No. I think this is in Phil's narrative.
Okay.
The vote that's advertised on the agenda is 797.
797, okay.
And I suppose, I mean, I suppose we could entertain a motion to correct it in the record if you would like prior to our vote on the special permit? That's at your discretion.
I, well, I didn't write it, but if you don't think it's an issue, then it's okay. Just doing my due diligence.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Madam Clerk, I would just consult with you. I mean, this is, the votes advertised clearly for 797.
Yes, it has been.
Thank you. Is there any further deliberation on the special permit prior to our proceeding to a vote? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on approval of the special permit. Two-thirds majority vote is required.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez. Absent. Counselor Whitfield. Absent. Counselor Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes. The votes are sufficient. The special permit is approved. Counselor Walsh on the reasons?
Mr. President, Counselor Walsh.
Counselor Fenton on the reasons?
Has a degree of laryngitis, so I'm going to read it. "The specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. We incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision as the basis of the findings."
Thank you, Counselor Fenton. Is there any discussion on the reasons? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on approval of the reasons. Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on approval of the reasons?
On approving the reasons, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez absent, Counselor Whitfield absent, Counselor Gauvain.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The reasons are accepted. Congratulations. Madam Clerk, please call item six.
Item six is for a special permit for an accessory wall sign above the first floor at the property known as 1021 Boston Road.
Is the petitioner present? Please step forward to the podium. It's a public hearing of the Springfield City Council. It will be run in accordance with our rules. The proponents will have 20 minutes to present testimony in favor of the special permit. Opponents will have the same right. Both sides will be entitled to five minutes for rebuttal at this time. I will begin the time and recognize the petitioner as the first proponent. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Christopher Rem. I work for Point on Signs. I'm not the person listed here. I hope that's not an issue.
That's okay.
I'm the contractor. Our address is 125 Samuel Barnett Boulevard in New Bedford, Massachusetts.
The floor is yours.
Basically, our client, the Springfield Storage Investors, is seeking permission to have us install their wall signs above the allowed first floor. We believe due to the size and the height of the building, it's more aesthetically pleasing. Having it on the first floor with that five-story building, it gets lost. It also will allow for better visibility for the customer when they're coming upon it. That's really all I have. I don't require 20 minutes. I'm sorry.
Thank you. If you have nothing further to offer, we'd ask that you step aside at this time, and we will inquire if there are any other individuals present, either virtually or in person, to testify in favor of the special permit? Say again, are there any further individuals present to testify in favor, either virtually or in person? Seeing none, are there any individuals present to testify in opposition to the special permit, either virtually or in person? Say again, is there anybody present to testify in opposition? Seeing none, are there any questions from the council while the hearing remains open? Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. Yes, just a question on... So I drove by on Boston Road, drove by this big new building going up. I'm presuming tonight that that's your new building.
If you could step forward to the podium, and Counselor Allen, if you could speak directly into the microphone.
Just questioning as to whether you're... This new building that I'm seeing going up on Boston Road on the right as you're going out from downtown out, that that's your new building?
No, I do not know. I'm only the sign contractor, so I'm not sure. I could not answer that question if that's theirs or not.
So are the signs going on that building?
The signs going on? Yeah, the big, the new big building. Yes, I'm sorry.
That's all?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I didn't know what that building was, and now I'm finding out what it was, what it is. How tall is that building?
I believe it's five stories. I don't know the exact height.
Five stories. Is that a... Is Phil available?
Yeah.
Phil, so the building that is just before Walmart kind of thing on the right, is that what we're talking about here?
Correct. It used to be a used car dealership there next to the Kitchen, Corio Kitchens, I think it is. So, yeah. I don't believe the building's five stories, but I... Yeah.
I was wondering what it was.
But it's, yeah, it's indoor self-storage, and then they have some kind of standard storage units elsewhere on the property.
And is it a couple stories tall, or...?
Yeah, I think it's two or three. But they... Self-storage in this particular zoning goes through a site plan review with the planning board. So the planning board did review the plans and approve them, so...
And they approved it?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize. The person in charge of the job was sick today, so I had to cover in. So that's why I don't have the exact...
It's all right.
Data? Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Gauvain?
My question was answered. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Gauvain. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to... I hear four stories later on. This 1021 Boston Road, I'm doing the Google map. I don't see anything that resembles four stories. Maybe Phil can queue me in a little bit more. And then, Phil, I'm just... I believe the gentleman said it was five stories building, and somebody else said four, but I'm doing the Google maps here at 1021 Boston Road. Excuse me, I don't see anything even close to resemble...
Well, yeah, you're not gonna find it. It's going up now, so you're not gonna find it on Google Maps.
Of course, I'm not gonna find it on Google Maps.
Yeah. There is a picture of it in the analysis.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's right across from Five Mile Pond.
But my succinct question was, when it says channel letters, that's just been plain letters?
Well, I think channel letters are kind of separate letters put together to create the signage.
But they're not gonna be illumination?
Well, I believe they will be illuminated.
The reason I ask, Phil, is because that little corner...
Illuminated channel letters, correct.
The reason I ask is because that little corner there by Walmart has been the scene of a lot of accidents, some real bad accidents. You still feel comfortable that this is not gonna pose a traffic issue? In regards to affecting traffic?
This type of signage would be allowed by right if it was on the first floor versus above the first floor.
I'm sorry, come again?
So it's well within what's allowed under zoning, so I don't believe the signage would be an issue for traffic?
All right, that's kind of my concern, but, you know, if it's within regulations, then, you know... But that is just my initial concern, is that that side there has been the scene of a lot of ugly accidents, and...
Yeah, I mean, certainly not a flashing or a digital sign, so I would assume it's just...
Flashier, okay. All right, thank you, Phil. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Are there any further questions for the petitioner while the hearing remains open? Counselor Fenton?
For the petitioner? That's you, sir.
If you could step forward to the podium.
This site is across from Five Mile Pond?
Yes.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your questions, Counselor Fenton?
It does.
Okay. Are there any further questions for the petitioner while the hearing remains open? Seeing none, without objection, I'll now declare that the public hearing is closed. Is there any deliberation amongst the council prior to our vote? Counselor Fenton?
Just to share with my colleagues, I intend to vote against this. I think the sign's too tall. It's right across from the pond. Not necessary. Just my two cents.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton.
Mr. President, I would love, no objection to hear Counsel... I couldn't hear Counselor Fenton's...
Counselor Fenton, could you please repeat your statement directly into the microphone?
Yeah, the acoustics are bad tonight. I think there's a fan or something. I just said that I intend to vote against it tonight. I think being across the street from the pond, being that high, and internally lit is just not necessary, so I am intending to vote against it.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton. Counselor Davila?
No, that is my question. Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Is there any further deliberation amongst the council prior to our vote on the special permit? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on approval of the special permit. Two-thirds majority vote is required.
On approving the permit, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
No.
No, Counselor Perez absent, Counselor Whitfield absent, Counselor Gauvain.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
No.
No, Counselor Davila?
No.
No, Counselor Letterman?
Yes. Madam Clerk, what's the yeas and nays?
Eight yeas.
The votes are insufficient, and the permit is not approved. Counselor Fenton on the reasons?
"The specific site is not an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use as developed will adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will not be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use, and we incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision at the basis of the findings."
Thank Counselor Fenton. Is there any discussion on the reasons? Seeing no discussion on the reasons, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on approval of the reasons.
On approving the reasons, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez absent, Counselor Whitfield absent, Counselor Gauvain?
No.
No, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The reasons for denial are approved. Madam Clerk, please call item seven.
Item seven is for a special permit to operate an indoor place of amusement at the property known as 1331 Main Street.
Is the petitioner present? Please step forward to the podium. This is a special permit hearing. It will be run in accordance with the same rules as previously stated. Proponents for the special permit will be awarded 20 minutes to testify in favor. Opponents will have the same right. Both will be entitled to five minutes of rebuttal. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and recognize the petitioner as the first proponent. Please state your name and address for the record, and following that, the floor is yours to present your permit.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nilda Coguria. My address, 37 Allender Street, Springfield, Massachusetts. And the idea of me opening the business started because I wanted to create a safe place to release frustration and anger, or the stress of the daily events that can create distress, providing a safe, fun environment for all customers and people from our community. My business will provide a safe environment to release emotions, letting stress and frustrations out by breaking objects safely, using the protection equipment, including hard hats, goggles, corals, and gloves and boots. In addition to the break room, will we also have services of our painted smashed rooms? It's the same concept. It's the concept where you smash paint across the rooms, and you'll be able at the end to create your own piece of art when you finish creating your smashing, things like that. So, and that will be my, you know, the first business in Western Massachusetts with this idea for everybody to go and release stress, and I found a different way for the community.
Thank you very much. Do you wish to offer any further testimony? Or have anything else to say tonight?
Well, no. It's the first place in Western Union that you could do that, and I'm nervous, and yeah.
No worries. If that concludes your statements, we'd ask that you step aside at this time, and we'll call for any additional individuals who are present, either in person or virtually, to speak in favor of the special permit. Please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Waldemar Torres. I'm also her husband, so I'm obviously not gonna say no, right? What I will say, though, like she said, this is the first time this type of business is in Western Mass completely. We have visited a business like this in Connecticut already, in Hartford. There's Smash Avenue, I believe it's called, so this is something that's, you know, it's common around, just not around here. We have spoken to a lot of people who do approve of it. Sadly, they're not here right now, but the place is just two blocks from here, right above the Kay Jewelers here on Main Street. Yeah, I believe they got the address there, right? And I just want to say that she has, you know, a lot of support, and we're ready to make this happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else present in person or virtually? Ms. Hogan, welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, counselors. My name is Somalit Hogan. I'm here representing the Latin Economic Development Corporation as a small business coach and advisor there, located at 24th Street in Springfield. Prior to working as a small business owner myself and consultant, I was working as regional director at the Small Business Development Center. That's where I met Nilka initially. She came to the center asking for advice and assistance on how to start a business, and she went through several webinars and seminars to learn how to run a business successfully here in the city. And just coincidentally, tonight, I was asked to come here to help her with her testimony, and I'm really happy to see how far she's come, and I'm here to support her. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. Are there any further individuals present in person or virtually to speak in favor of the special permit? Say again, Mr. Martin? Please state your name and address for the record.
So my name is Jerry Martin. I'm from 34 Oregon Street in Springfield. I am in favor of this permit. I think having new, diverse businesses in our economy is good for Springfield's culture, Springfield's identity, and good for the business owner. So I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Are there any further individuals present virtually or in person to speak in favor of the special permit? Seeing none, are there any individuals present virtually or in person to speak in opposition to the special permit? Say again, are there any individuals present virtually or in person to speak in opposition? Seeing none, while the hearing remains open, are there any questions from counselors? Counselor Hurst?
Just a quick question for the petitioner. What... Can you just tell, again, what is it that you're looking to do?
It's a place where you break items to release stress, or for fun.
What type of items are you breaking?
I will have computers. I will have scanners, desks, all kinds of objects for you guys to break in a safely way, to release stress.
And what do you break them with?
Huh?
What do you break them with?
Well, I'm going to give you a kind of your tool of your preference. It could be a hammer, it could be a slash hammer, it could be a bat. I have a different variety of things to give you guys, for you guys to be able to smash the items.
People pay for this?
Yes, they pay for it. It's a fun way to really stress. We all go through it every day.
I love it. I mean, I'm planning on supporting it. I hope you're successful. Certainly haven't seen it or heard of it, but, you know, something different, something different to really, you know, ignite the economy here in the city of Springfield, and, you know, I wish you well. This is an interesting idea.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hurst. Counselor Gauvain?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've heard about this kind of thing in other places, and as a social worker, my only concern, of course, is, you know, stress and anger specifically are, you know, sometimes could be very serious. So I guess my question would be, if you see someone coming back, like every day, they have to smash something, are you guys going to be able to possibly provide people with some other resources? Like maybe they might need to see a therapist, they might need anger management, you know? So I would just like to see if that's something that you guys plan on doing, or if you would be willing to do?
I am. Is I... My background is as a medical assistant, so I heard, like, in the community, the necessity of people getting some mental health. So this is kind of like why the idea came up of people going to me and telling me how the anger goes, or how the day goes about. So I have, you know, sources for give the people when I notice, which I could tell when people actually in distress, and I could tell them, like, listen, you need a little bit more, you're in a crisis. I could give you this phone number. I could help you out. I'm here to help the community, because this is what this business is all about, is for everybody to have a place to really stress and be good and above the day. I definitely could give you resources for whoever needs it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you for that, because, you know, it could be a lot of fun, and I've seen it in other places. I think there's even a TV show or something about it that's like that. But, you know, especially anger, I think, and even stress, you know, stress can kill you. So I appreciate that you will be able to have some resources available for people who, you know, may need some additional help besides smashing stuff. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gauvain. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. I believe Nilka, right? Nilka Coguria?
Yes, Nilka.
Good evening to you, ma'am. Congratulations on this new model. I've seen these models before, and I think it's mainly out West. But, Mr. President, before I ask my question, I have to say that I couldn't resist but noticing the irony that is across City Hall. And maybe, Mr. President... And, Mr. President, we should all take one hour of professional development and experience this for a time to help us, to help us in our performance of duties here in the city council, which we all love, we're all passionate about. But in all seriousness, Nilka, um, so, I, I see what, I got two specific questions for you. How are you getting your items that are gonna be destroyed?
Donations, donations, curbsides.
From who?
thrift stores. Like, everything is donations, curbside thrift store, wherever I could see the item.
Someone, yes, my point is, you're gonna do your due diligence to make sure that those donations are, in fact, donations that are
Yes.
not used, that somebody, okay, so
Yes.
that is gonna be, okay, discarded. The other question that I have, which is more important to me, is if you're gonna give them something to break with, whether it be a sledgehammer, whatever, that you, how are you gonna account that you have all your bats, all your sledgehammers, so nobody walks out with, with something out of the location, and they decide to smash something outside?
I really didn't hear you well, but to say.
The question is, how are you going to, what kind of system are you gonna use to ensure that all your tools are still the property? So, somebody doesn't like a bat or a slash hammer too much, and they decide they want to take it outside and continue to relieve the stress?
Were you able to understand the question? I, I believe, if I, if I may, I believe that what Counselor Davila is asking is, how will you ensure that the tools that are utilized within your space do not leave your space? In other words, that people do not
Take a bat or a sledgehammer.
Take a, an operational tool that you've provided them with outside of the space and utilize it beyond the space?
Oh, no. No, everybody will be, um, before and after given instruction on how, where exactly they're gonna be smashing stuff, where they're gonna put them right after. All those items are completely sanitized, I'm sorry. And the person that is gonna be there after they finish smashing, they will be making sure that all the items and everything is placed back where they're supposed to, and this, the place that they need to go sanitize them.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Nilka. Nilka, thank you so much for, for your testimony. My compliments to you on your vision. I hope you help a lot of people. And, again, it is something that it's different, different, diverse, somebody used the word diverse economy. I love it. I absolutely love it, Nilka.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davila.
Thank you.
Counselor Walsh, followed by Counselor Fenton.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, like Counselor Hurst, I'm trying to get a sense of your, your business and how it would work. Is this like one room that people go into to smash things? And how many people are in there at the same time? And, and, and you said this, you had a business like this in Hartford. Did I hear that correctly?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, who typically is, is the clientele, and, and, and what are the, the hours? I really don't know much about this. I'd like to get a better idea of what it is we're being asked to support.
All right. So, I will have three rooms designated with soundproof all around for the noise don't get disturbed the neighbors. In those rooms specific, I'm going to give you a basket where you're gonna go in that room, and you're gonna, I'm gonna give you the basket with the items for you to, after you sign the waiver, and after you read the instruction, and give you all your equipment to go into those rooms and be able to break the stuff. You have to sign a release, a waiver that you are aware that what you're going to be doing in those rooms. Once you get the basket, you're gonna pick yourself the time that you wanna be in those rooms. If you wanna be 20 minutes, that's how, how long you wanna be in there breaking stuff to relieve the stress. Well, you're gonna have everything for your protections, and after that, you know, you're gonna be released, stress-free after. Two people are able to break. The rooms are pretty big, so you could have up to four people, but one people at a time could be smashing the items. They gotta take turns.
And do your customers wear any protective clothing?
Yes, I will, I will be supplying an overall suit, like, kind of like the mechanics wear, a hard hat, goggles, glove, and boots for you to go in those rooms and be able to break those items.
So, I'm giving you And what do they break the stuff with?
They will gonna have either a bat, hammer, slash hammer, to be able to hit the items and break the, the objects.
It definitely is a unique idea.
I'm so nervous. I'm so sorry, yeah. But it's, it's, it's gonna be, it's already in other places. I started advertising this in 2020. Other places in other states, kind of like in Hartford, Foxwoods Casino, jumping in the wagon, and they opened their own smash room. They, they call Smash Avenue. So, this is a play, a thing there. It's growing. It's a new way to relieve stress without judgment.
Is there an age limit for patrons?
Excuse me?
Age limit?
The age limit will be 12 and up with the concern of their parents, because kids get stressed as well. And since I have both the smash and the paint and smash, so they could participate in both as long as their parents sign the concern and, and the waiver.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Fenton, followed by Counselor Govan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ma'am, what floor will this be on in the building?
The third floor.
And is the landlord aware of this proposed use? And I'm thinking about it from a noise perspective. They're okay with this?
Yes, they are aware, and they know what's coming into the building. They decided to have me in there as well.
Very good. And you're also aware that any signage for this use will need to be approved by the Springfield Redevelopment Authority, and that's separate from tonight?
Well, if it could be included as well, one meeting, get the permit for the sign as well, so I could get, get it open. Hey, we're here. Why not, if it's possible?
That's the right attitude, but it can, it cannot. It needs to be, it's a separate group, a separate board, and they'll, they'll be scrutinizing the signed permit when the time comes. And then, I guess the last thing is, I just want to make sure you said that they'll use a variety of, I guess, weapons of choice for the destruction. Those weapons won't include firearms of any kind, right?
Oh, no, 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 nothing like that violent. No, no, just things for you to use and smash like a bat, a hammer. When you're gonna be in there, you're gonna pick which one you're gonna break the item. This don't work. Let me use the other one. So, no, no violence like that, no guns.
Very good. Thank you.
Tools, tools.
Counselor Fenton, does that conclude your remarks?
It does.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna go to Counselor Govan, and then we're gonna go to Counselor Click Bruce, and then we'll go to Counselor Allen. Counselor Govan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I guess another question I had was, what would, what are you gonna do with the destroyed items? How are you gonna discard of them?
I have a trash barrel in place. The, they already know what, all their stuff I'm gonna be throwing, so. Everything went into the trash, and pretty much everything's kind of recycled, because everything is broken and ready to be recycled. So, I have a trash in place, a big one.
Okay, great. Okay, um, yeah, 'cause concerned about the, you know, um, getting rid of stuff. So, um, also, again, I have to caution, um, when people, a long time ago, we, they used to think that if you had, you know, anger issues, you could, you know, beat pillows and, or punch things, that it was discovered that that's not really a great way to, um, deal with anger, um, anger issues. That's just one of my really big concerns, so, um, I don't know. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. Counselor Click Bruce, followed by Counselor Allen.
Let's have a question on regards to, um, the safety. Would there be like any security on site, also like any cameras inside the rooms where someone is actually monitoring what's going on? Just, just
Yes, there will be cameras all over the place since the moment you walk in the place into the moment you will, you leave the premises. And security, I'm gonna have my employers in there. Everything's kind of for now, because it's by myself. I'm by appointment. So, the person that goes there, you know, obviously, they need to check the ID. I need to make sure that they eighteen and over, and they have to fill that waiver. So, then, security-wise, in that matter, yeah, I, it should be good. It's not like a place, like a club where, it's an entertainment place, but it's not a club where it should be violent, so that kind of matter.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Counselor Click Bruce. Counselor Allen?
Uh, thanks, excuse me. Thanks, Mr. President. Phil, are you available? Phil, is there any special other permits or anything needed besides the special permit we're, we're talking about? Is, is there anything else like this needed for something like this?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, this is a, this is a kind of a first, so. But I'm not aware, besides the special permit, what other particular permits they would need besides your, your typical business permits through the city clerk's office, but I'm not aware. You know, my main concern was, when I first heard of it, was, you know, noise, but the, the petitioner has indicated that the rooms that they go in to smash things are gonna be soundproof. And if that becomes an issue in the future, then the stuff that, I guess, add more soundproofing. But, um, again, I, I was able to look online. There are a number of these around. And I, I think they mentioned the closest is the one in Hartford. There are a number of them in Eastern Mass. So, it was a new use for me as well. We kind of had to classify it. So, I, I don't believe, besides the special permit, there are any other specific permits that are needed.
Did we hear from the Army, is it Army Quadrangle that would be the civic association?
It would, it would fall under the Armory Quadrangle. I don't know whether the petitioner has gone to them or not. I haven't heard.
Can we ask them if they've gone to the local civic association?
Yes, the petitioner is at the podium. I would encourage you to direct the question to them.
Yeah, have you, have you brought your proposal to the local civic association, which is the Army Quadrangle Civic Association?
I believe I did, but I was in, Armory Quadrant Civic, as, yes. They are, they were aware of my business.
They're aware of it, but did you go to a meeting, or do you have a letter from them stating their approval, or?
May I step forward, please?
Ms. Hogan?
So, um, Nilka did make the, um, the Quadrangle Association aware of this. However, because it is right now on Main Street in a business area, they didn't seem to need to, she didn't feel like the need to go in further, because it's not in a residential area. It's in a busy office building area.
And that they, you, that was the result of asking them that question?
She has indicated to me that Andrew Melendez from the Latino Economic Development Corporation spoke to them. So, she does not, she cannot answer that question directly to you, because he's not here, and she didn't hear his answer.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion to continue this discussion.
Counselor Allen has made a motion to continue the item. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion's been seconded by Counselor Walsh. Is there any discussion on the motion to continue? Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I do see why my colleague makes the, the motion to, to committee, and I think it's an appropriate motion. I think it's a motion that makes sense, given our history of, in my own instance, of insisting that we talk to the civic association. So, I most definitely think it's quite appropriate, and I can see the reason behind it. But I do, as I understand it, I think that this particular business, tends to cater more to, of course, everybody, but to the office professionals, to people that have, like us, high level of stress, busy lives, not as a anger management treatment or as a, some sort of a mental health treatment. It's more of a, what's the word I'm looking for? An activity also is used for activities to, to build, uh, uh, team dynamics. So, I, I, although I'm comfortable with this proposal today, I see the motion, I could see the reason like why Counselor made the motion, and I think it's quite appropriate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Is there any further discussion on the motion to continue the item?
To continue?
The motion to continue.
I apologize, continue.
Correct.
That will be next meeting, correct?
The next meeting, which would be June 26. Seeing no further discussion without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to continue. Counselor Hurst, on the motion?
Is, are there any issues with us continuing this, this item, you know, from a business standpoint? I mean, are you all awaiting?
I, it is kind of.
Something?
Because I was supposed to, like, be in place with the, with the lease and everything. I would, um, this meeting, because I'm the first one, they didn't know how to go above. To be honest, when I started this back in 2020, all I needed was my business certificate, because nobody knew what I was bringing. So, right now, I have been trying to do this in March, and the people, summertime is coming. People are sending emails. Everybody wants this place to open. I have the business plan since 2018. I am ready to open the doors and be able to help people in the community to, to understand this new way to stress-free this place. And holding this date back further is making all the plans from the place and the day that I have in my mind that I was able to open the doors for Springfield. So, to me, you know.
May I approach again?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Hogan?
Although we do not have any proof or that she has attended any, she has not attended any civic association meeting, and Andrew is not here to testify to say whether or not he had, like, the conversation that he had with them, we do want to bring your attention to the analysis for the special permit that indicates that the Armory Quadrangle Civic Association was notified about this permit on May 8, 2023. And so, I do not know exactly what the procedures are typically, but I would think that if they got notified and they had a serious objection on this permit, they would have come forward and spoken to Nilka.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. Counselor Hurst, the floor remains yours. All set?
I'm all set.
Thank you, Counselor Hurst. Is there any further discussion on the motion to continue? Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to make, to be sure, we need nine votes, correct?
Need nine votes for passage of the permit. You need seven votes to continue it.
Correct. I just want to make sure that the petitioner is, if I may, Mr. President, that she's fully aware that if we move forward and you don't get nine votes, I believe you have to wait two years, correct?
That is correct, without a recommendation on the planning board.
Correct. I just want to make sure that she understands that, Nilka. If you don't get nine votes, you can't come back in two years. Do you understand that?
What Counselor Davila is referring to is, is a rule that exists that if your special permit fails, which would occur if you did not get nine votes tonight, you'd be prohibited from reapplying for a period of two years, unless you had a unanimous approval from the planning board.
Understood. Hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Counselor Walsh?
Yes, uh, thank you. I have a point of information, and I, which is important, I think, for the petitioner, that if, which Counselor Davila was trying to explain. I'm looking around the room, and I'm counting the numbers, and it doesn't appear to me with the absences and with the concerns about the business, that you would have enough votes for this to pass. And, and the most prudent thing for you, and to help you with your business and your model, is for this to go to committee and, and give people an opportunity to learn more about your business and have a full council present when you come back, so that you'll have enough votes for passage. I'm gonna support the move to committee. Not that I'm against your business, but because I don't think it will, your proposal will pass tonight unless it goes to committee first.
Just to make sure, the motion is to continue, not to committee.
The motion is to continue. If we continue it tonight, it would be continued to the June 26 meeting. The hearing would remain open.
Correct.
Is there any further discussion on the motion to committee? Seeing no further discussion on the motion to committee?
To continue.
Motion to continue.
I'm sorry, the motion to continue. Seeing no further discussion on the motion to continue, Madam Clerk, without objection, please call the roll on the motion to continue.
On the motion to continue, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
No.
No, Counselor Perez, absent. Counselor Whitfield, absent. Counselor Govan?
No.
No, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
No.
No, Counselor Hurst?
No.
No.
No, Counselor Click Bruce.
No.
No, Counselor Edwards.
No.
No, Counselor Curran.
No.
No, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
No, the votes are not sufficient. The motion to continue fails. Hearing remains open. Are there any further questions for the petitioner prior to our proceeding to a vote on the special permit? Counselor Davila.
Thank you. And maybe this question is for, I believe, the consultant, Somali, if I may.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Hi, Somali. Good to see you again.
See you.
I just want to make sure that I am correct when the profile of the average customer for this type of business is more clerical, even though it's open to everybody, is more clerical? City councilors, mayors, people with high-stress jobs. It's not used as a treatment modality, but it's used as an activity to help you cope with stress and to help you even build team dynamics, correct?
That is correct. It's just an activity for, purely for entertainment and for stress relief.
Very well. And, okay. And so I know NILCA said that it poses a burden for her. Is she already on the lease over there?
She has negotiated a lease and the landlord's fully aware of everything that she's doing and they're in full support.
Okay, so if the vote fails today, what happens to the lease?
If the vote fails today, NILCA would have to absorb all of the costs to date for hiring an architect, getting architectural plans, getting the site plan review and all of that stuff that she had to do to get Planning and Economic Development to review her request.
All right, thank you, Mr. Somali. Mr. President, I would just conclude by saying that I highly value safety. I also highly value diverse economies. I do feel comfortable with this business model. I've seen it before. I heard about it in the West. It's not that often here. I am comfortable that it's going to be safe. And so I will encourage my colleagues to give it a try, to give a two-vote yes on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. The hearing remains open. Are there any further questions for the petitioner prior to the close of the hearing? Seeing no further questions from counselors, I'll now declare that the public hearing is closed. Is there any deliberation amongst the council prior to our vote on the special permit? Say again, is there any further deliberation? Seeing no further deliberation, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll to approve the special permit. Two-thirds majority vote is required.
On approving the special permit, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent. Counselor Whitfield, absent. Counselor Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The special permit is approved.
Good luck.
This is my dream and I hope you guys visit and relieve some stress.
Congratulations. Madam Clerk, now Counselor Fenton on the reasons for approval.
The specific site is an appropriate location for such a use structure or condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use and we incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision as the basis of the findings.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton. Is there any discussion on the reasons for approval? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the reasons.
On approving the reasons, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent. Counselor Govan, absent. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Whitfield, absent. Counselor Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The reasons are approved. Madam Clerk, please call item eight.
Item eight is to change the zoning of the properties known as 1685 Boston Road, 1655 Boston Road, 1719 Boston Road and North Side of Ferb and Bank Road by removing the properties from the Regional Shopping Center overlay district.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is the petitioner present? It's a zone change hearing. It will be run in accordance with the rules of the city council. Proponents will be given 20 minutes to testify in favor of the zone change. Opponents will have the same rights and both sides will be entitled to five minutes of rebuttal. At this time, I will recognize the petitioner as the first proponent and declare that the public hearing is now open. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, councilors. Seth Stratton with Fitzgerald Law with offices at Monarch Place here in Springfield. With me here tonight is my colleague, Attorney John Dross, and a face many of you know, Judge Mary Hurley, my colleagues on this project. We represent Onyx Springfield Crossing LLC as agent for the petitioners. As you will all recall, we were here a few weeks ago. This council unanimously approved a special permit for the redevelopment of the Eastville Mall property. We thank you for your consideration and support on that vote. You will recall that at the time, I mentioned that we had just come from a planning board approval on a zone change prior to that city council hearing and that we would be back before this body, at the time, next month for an approval of that zone change. Well, we're back here tonight and we are looking for a zone change to remove the Regional Shopping Center overlay district. As a refresher, the Regional Shopping Center overlay district was a mechanism that was put into place to ensure that with the previous mall that anchor tenants at the mall such as Macy's or JCPenney could not be internally subdivided to, into smaller shopping centers to compete with the other tenants, the smaller tenants in the mall, without further barriers to doing so. That's no longer necessary with the redevelopment that we're proposing and would negatively impact and possibly slow down the development process. And I'll point out to the council, Mr. Dromy's report from the Office of Planning and Economic Development. In the final paragraph, Mr. Dromy writes that overall, the staff feels strongly that the Regional Shopping Center overlay district was an important tool at the time. However, due to the complete redevelopment of the site, the overall conditions of this property will be completely altered. As currently written and looking at the redevelopment plans for the site, the staff believes the Regional Shopping Center overlay district becomes more of a hindrance to the new development than a needed zoning tool. We agree wholeheartedly with that analysis. We thank you for your consideration and respectfully request your support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Stratton. Are there any other individuals present, either virtually or in person, to speak in favor of the zone change? Say again, are there any further individuals present virtually or in person to speak in favor of the zone change? Seeing none, is there anybody present in person or virtually to speak in opposition to the zone change? I'll say again, are there any persons present in person or virtually to speak in opposition to the zone change? Seeing none, are there any questions from the council while the hearing remains open? Say once again, are there any questions from the council while the hearing remains open? Seeing none, without objection, I'll now declare that the public hearing is closed. Is there any deliberation amongst the body? Say again, is there any further deliberation amongst the city council prior to our vote on the zone change? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on approving the zone change.
On approving the zone change, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent. Counselor Whitfield, absent. Counselor Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes, the votes are sufficient. Zone change is approved. Madam Clerk, please call item nine.
Item nine is an amendment of Article Four, Section 4.7.114, adult use marijuana.
So the zone change hearing, zoning amendment, will be conducted in the same case as our previous hearing. 20 minutes for the proponents, 20 minutes for any opposed, five minutes of rebuttal entitled on both sides. At this time, I'll declare that the public hearing is now open. Recognize Mr. Dromy as the first proponent to testify. Mr. Dromy.
Good evening. Phil Dromy, Deputy Director of Planning for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. And I'm here on behalf of a proposed zone change being petitioned by the Springfield City Council for an amendment to Article Four, Section 4.7.114B5. This is a section which talks, which references the adult use marijuana ordinance, specifically the hours of operation. What is currently on the books is, under Article, the subsection five, is that the hours of operation shall be set by the city council, but in no event shall a marijuana retailer be open to the public and no sale or other distribution of marijuana shall occur upon the premises or via delivery from the premises between the hours of 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM. The proposed change is to read, "The hours of operation shall be set by the city council, but in no event shall a marijuana retailer be open to the public and no sale or other distribution of marijuana shall occur upon the premises or via delivery from the premises between the hours of 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM." So basically, they would be allowed to open two extra hours instead of having to close at 9:00. They would be allowed to open until 11:00. It is important to note that that first section, in the section, while it does say that you can stay open till 11:00, the city council still ultimately has the authority to regulate the hours. So if there's a specific location that is, you know, close to residence or some other use that may come up, the city council does not have to allow someone to be open to 11:00. I did do some research on the internet, although it was tough getting to the marijuana sites from a city website, but, I mean, a city computer. But I was able to find there are, you know, a few communities around us that do allow hours till 11:00. That's Hoyoke. North Hampton actually doesn't regulate hours in their zoning. But they, I did speak with the planner up in North Hampton and they do have a number of the uses up there that stay open till 11:00. There's also a number of them in the eastern part of the state, including Gardner. Worcester as well allows till 11:00 PM. So again, I think this just is, you know, I kind of defer to the body as well. But it, again, it would just allow a current operator to stay open till 11:00 PM. Again, as with all these uses, they do trigger special permits which come before you at the end of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Dromy. Do you have anything further to offer?
Nope.
With that, we'll ask you to step aside. Are there any further individuals present to speak in favor? Say again, are there any further individuals present to speak in favor of the special permit, either in person or virtually? I'm sorry, in favor of the zone change? Seeing none, are there any individuals present to speak in opposition to the zone change, either in person or virtually? I'll say again, are there any persons present to speak in opposition, either virtually or in person? Seeing none, we'll enter into questions from the city council. And we'll go to, there's a number of you. So I'm going to go to Counselor Edwards and then I'm going to come over here to Counselor Fenton. Then I'm going to go to Counselor Davila and I'm going to go to Counselor Walsh. We're going to get a whiteboard up here for the next meeting. Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually wanted the people who were pushed to get this changed. I thought that it was important for us as a council to recognize that when recreational cannabis sales were legalized, that it was an unknown commodity and industry. And since it's opened, we put very restrictive regulations in place in terms of streets, hours of operations and things that mirrored what the state allowed for us to do. Since then, I believe that we approved the possibility of having up to 14 dispensaries. I don't expect that we will get to 14 dispensaries. This body has actually approved a couple of them or at least a few different dispensaries that are no longer on the path to opening or being operated here in the city. The market has changed. The wholesale price of cannabis has gone down considerably. The state of Connecticut, since we put our regulations in place, have come online as well, I believe, New York, Rhode Island and several other states. The ideal, this industry is a boom for the economy. We have lost a lot of money up to this point, not because, so much because of our regulations being so strict, but mostly because our process has been so slow and people who could have came into the market and taken advantage of it earlier have missed out. Now we have a lot more competition. Anything that we could do that does not cause harm to the community and the neighbors and the residents of our city, I feel that we should try to do. There's an article on Mass Live today. The state is looking at creating new regulations on-site social consumption. In a time that I started to look through this proposal and seeking support for it, could find no reports of any loitering at any of the three operational centers in Springfield. Very few police or if any reports of any type of congestion or problems with their operation. And unlike liquor stores where people typically, not a lot, but in certain neighborhoods, will congregate in the parking lot and consume alcohol. I'm a big fan of banning nips in the city of Springfield. And if not banning them, at least it's like to see a 25 cent per nip bottle put on them to help because people will sit in the parking lot. They are the problem. That is not a problem that you find at cannabis dispensaries throughout Springfield. People come collect your stuff and they leave. We've lost a lot of money because we have no on-site grow facilities in the city of Springfield. And I believe that's in litigation now. But the point is, is that anything we can do to help this industry, because that money is coming back to the city. I believe we have some, a fund which we haven't had any discussions about accessing, that the role of the city council is to expend it, unlike most of the money that comes to the general fund. I believe we have oversight of those expenditures, if I'm not correct. But I'm encouraging my colleagues to give serious consideration to supporting this. I don't see anything negative as we read the conditions at the granting or denial of a permit. I don't see there's any condition in there that would cause, should cause us any pause. They can stay open to nine, not mandated to stay open to 11:00 if they choose to and if for some reason there was public outcry or concerns, we do have the option to ask them to restrict their hours tonight. But as it stands right now, seeing no reason why we should not support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a question for Phil. Phil, if we pass this and we have later hours that are allowed, what happens to special permits already granted that have conditions that say before 11:00?
Because... That's a good question. I would have to defer to Attorney Shea to see whether or not those guys have to come back and amend that. I don't know whether changing it in the zoning, because I do believe all the special permits that are issued do specifically state the hours of operation. So I'm not 100% sure how that works.
So, Mr. President...
I would think they probably have to come back and amend, but I'm not.
Thank you. I'm very much in support of this for competitive purposes with our surrounding communities. I don't want to have an unintended result where we end up passing a later curfew of 11 o'clock and now all of a sudden the exact language of a condition of one of the special permits we previously granted becomes super important. For example, if we put in one permit, a condition that said you're subject to the hours in the ordinance, but then in another, we specifically said you have to close by nine or eight. Is it eight currently?
Nine.
Nine, yeah, we have to close by nine. Then the person who had the more specific language would be stuck under a competitive disadvantage after we made this change. So as long as someone can say with certainty that that's not going to happen, that there's a way for us to avoid that, whether it's Phil or Attorney Shea or someone else, then I'm fully in support of it. But until then, I don't want to unintentionally allow some operators, but not others, to be open later. And I just don't, we don't have all of their special permit language in front of us at this moment. So I'm just not absolutely sure. So it sounds like Phil can't speak to that. Perhaps Counselor Edwards can, someone else, but that's my only concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton. Counselor Davila is next in the queue and we'll circle around to the question from Counselor Fenton. Counselor Davila. Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Edwards has answered for Counselor Fenton. I'm hearing it as long as I can connect.
Counselor Edwards, would you like to be heard on Counselor Fenton's question?
I apologize, but that was something I didn't consider, to be honest with you. The purpose and the way it was described to me was that this would apply to the present operators, but also those in the pipeline that are applying for licenses as well. It would be a level playing field for everybody. That was the original intention, but I, your point is perhaps either Fenton or Shea, and if they can't at this point answer it, then I would be entertained or be willing to make a motion to continue based on, to get that piece of information clear. But I would like for an opportunity either to Phil or to Attorney Shea to address that particular part right there.
Without objection.
I see Phil is at the podium, so he may have...
Well, I just want to stress that this, the change will apply to everybody, but again, the ones that already have their special permit, I believe, have language in there that talk about the 9:00 o'clock. I'm not 100% sure, because I don't have them in front of me, but I believe all the ones we've issued, I think it's three now for the adult use, I think, talk about it. But ultimately, this will apply to everybody, but the guys coming in later will, their special permits, I'm assuming, will reflect the change in the ordinance.
Counselor Edwards. May I, could we hear from Attorney Shea? I know we did have an expert that, or designated attorney that was supposed to be our expert on all things cannabis. I believe she has left the city's employ, and we wish her well, but perhaps Attorney Shea could address that particular issue.
Yes, Attorney Shea.
In the process.
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, the, if one of the operators in their approval that we gave them specifically states the hours as Attorney Fenton talked about, then they would have to request that the council waived that and allow them to go to the new hours. I don't think we have that many, but if it's specific in their operating instructions that they had to close at 9:00 o'clock, and that's something that was put in there, then they would have to ask the council to remove that restriction.
Thank you, Attorney Shea. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
I don't need to continue. I would like to make the motion to move forward, and I would hope the council would support. Those who wish to do it will have, that are already operational, they will have to come back, but they'll have the option if they choose not to. Unfortunately, if that's the law, then we can't subvert that part of it. But it also, but it does clarify for all future applicants, they'll have, they'll know that their hours will be able to continue. If there's a way for us as a body to approve or change that across the board for those that are already existing, I would certainly entertain that motion, and I would be supportive of it, but I don't know if that's legal to do.
Mr. President?
Attorney Shea.
On the point just raised by Counselor, I could look into drafting something that maybe might take care of that issue, if that's going to help you. But I would think you could go forward tonight, and then we can come up with, we might be able to find something that will, the council could pass without each one of them coming in and petitioning the council on their own, if that's going to help.
Thank you, Attorney Shea. I'm going to return us to the order that I had called, because I know several people still want to be heard, and I think some more will want to be heard before we make a final determination this evening. So, we're going to go to Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Walsh, who were in the original queue.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think my questions might have been answered, but I just want to make sure, either Attorney Shea or Phil, that I understood. So, if we have, if we pass this today, any business going forward, we have the option to stay open until 11:00 p.m. Those existing businesses that we have already given a permit to, they may have conditions to stay until 9:00 p.m. However, they could come back to this wise body and ask for a modification. Is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And in that case, the council will be hard-pressed probably to give it to them. But this is not exactly related to the, to the, to the amendment, but does extending the hours, we talked about consumption on site, does that, does that affect somehow the consumption, or can we still...
There is no consumption on site.
...rummaged over in terms of limiting the hours for consumption on site?
Well, yeah, right now, consumption is not allowed in the ordinance. If that comes up, the ordinance would need to change to allow an on-premises consumption. That's currently not allowed under our ordinance now. So, the changing of the hours really has nothing to do with whether you're, nobody should be consuming anything on site.
Correct, correct. Okay, thank you, Phil. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think that we've got to think about being fair to the businesses that have been abiding by the special permit. I don't know how many there are, Phil, who are going to be affected by this, and I think we as a council, or Ken Shea, should come up with a way that if they do have to come back to the council, it's one stop, they don't have to keep coming back, and we can pass it as soon as they come in, because this is a change we're making, they're living by the rules, and we're changing them.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Govan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Counselor Walsh, and I like the idea of Attorney Shea creating some sort of a, I'm not sure what it would be called, but having it so that we could kind of like grandfather in the businesses that are currently opening till 8:00, and if they so desire, they can stay open till 11:00 without having to go through the process of coming to the council again for a special permit, because I agree that it's not, you know, necessarily fair to them to have to go through that process again, and I'm not sure if it would cost anything for them to do that, but I just don't want to put in any more undue burden on them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. Counselor Hurst.
I agree with my two previous colleagues. I, you know, for me, the biggest issue was the cost for those individuals who would have to come back before the city council. A couple other questions, Phil. I know we're starting to consider delivery, or actually, we've already approved a couple delivery license, and now social consumption is the new thing that is going to come before, I'm assuming, this body at some point in time through zoning. What are we doing, do you know, to sort of look at the ordinance that we have and the zoning laws to take into consideration some of those other areas that we haven't necessarily taken into consideration? I mean, I know, I feel like the last time I looked, delivery still had some things that needed to be tweaked in our zoning ordinance, and certainly for social consumption, there probably needs to be some language in there regarding that as well. Is there anybody in the law department that is solely focused on this particular issue?
I don't want to speak to the law department, but as Counselor Edwards said, we did have an attorney who was kind of the guru of this, of these, and unfortunately, we lost her, so, I went to another job, I won't say. So, I believe there's, and again, I'm kind of speaking out of turn, there's a couple of different types of delivery. We've approved the delivery from the retail location. I believe there's other types of delivery that I'm not sure we have under our ordinance, but social consumption right now is just a no under our current ordinance. So, I have not had discussions with anybody from the law department about whether or not we're looking to change that or not. I think that's really a policy decision on whether the city wants to allow that, and I don't know exactly where that stands as far as the state goes either, so...
No, I get it. I guess one of my frustrations is that we're dealing with this piecemeal, right? And so, we're looking at, you know, one aspect of the zoning regs around the hours of operation, and we're going to amend that. And for me, we probably need to take a more in-depth look at the zoning regs as they stand now, just to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, considering, you know, delivery and potentially social consumption, and then even just the dispensaries themselves. I'm sure there are some other changes that folks probably, you know, it makes sense to make, and probably would make it more business-friendly for all of the dispensaries, so...
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with you. I think a look at the ordinance is probably due for the number of years that we've had it, and as businesses open up, I think you find things that, you know, I always say zoning always has unintended consequences, so there are issues that may be able to be tweaked. I would certainly need help in trying to get through those, but I don't disagree with you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Hurst. Is there any further deliberation while the hearing remains open? Say again. Seeing none, without objection, I'll declare that the hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion amongst the council prior to a vote on the zoning amendment? Say again, is there any further discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to continue.
Counselor Hurst has made a motion to continue. Is there a second? Motion was seconded by Counselor Allen. Is there discussion on the motion to continue? See, Counselor Davila.
How can I phrase my question, Mr. President? No, I guess not. I guess I would like to follow up on the basis of the, any particular concerns that...
Just until we get further guidance from the law department, just to see if we could put something in place that doesn't allow the businesses who are already in existence to suffer from a financial standpoint. So, you know, if within the next month, you know, Counselor or Attorney Shea doesn't have anything before us, then, you know, if it's the will of the body, we move forward, but, you know, it seems to me that if he can make something happen, I don't know if that's possible or not, then, you know, we at least give him the opportunity to do so, so that other businesses are not suffering who are already in existence.
Counselor Davila, the floor remains yours.
Sure, I guess if I may, Attorney Shea, if I may.
Attorney Shea.
Okay, yes. Yes, Counselor.
So, I guess, would you be able to have something for us by the next meeting? I think while the council is before, talked about grandfathering those existing businesses...
What is the date of your next meeting?
I'm sorry, say that again.
What is the date of your next meeting? When you say next meeting, I think I can put something together. I don't know if I'm going to get it done if it's in a week, but I don't think I'd need a month.
Mr. President.
Attorney Shea, the next hearings meeting of the Springfield City Council is on June 26th.
Let's see, I think I can, I think if I'm going to come up with something, I'm going to have it by then. And if I can't, I'll let you know, and then we'll deal with it. But I think we can identify those licenses that have that restriction. That would be one of the things I'd want to do, and then I think there's got to be a way that I could craft something that the council could pass that would amend or correct or waive those requirements and put in the new ones. I'm sure there's a way to do that.
Thank you, Attorney Shea. Mr. President, if I may, Phil, are you still in the chambers? Quick question for you, my good sir. Will we be able to, just to keep everybody in the loop, for those existing businesses that have been granted a license, for them to be made aware of this intention so that they can be made aware, like I said, just kind of like hinted to?
Sure.
Because we don't have that many, right? We have a...
I think there's only, I think there's only three, so I mean, you would just like me to inform that we're looking at change? I'm not sure exactly what you're...
Is that possible? That was something that we, yeah, because I think it will be, they're aware, and that way they can choose if they want to opt in or out, or whatever they want to do according to the model. But thank you, Phil. Thank you, Attorney Shea. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Allen? I apologize, I thought you had motioned. Is there any further discussion on the motion to continue? Seeing no further discussion on the motion to continue, Madam Clerk, without objection, please call the roll on the motion to continue. Majority vote is required.
On the motion to continue, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez absent. Counselor Whitfield absent. Counselor Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown. Counselor Brown?
I'm sorry, let the record reflect that Counselor Brown has disconnected.
Away, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes, the votes are sufficient. This will be continued to the June 26 hearing meeting. Madam Clerk, is there any further business properly brought before the city council?
There is not.
Seeing none, members, we will convene tomorrow at 5:30 p.m. in committee of the whole for our FY '24 budget presentation. Until then, stay safe.